Welcome, folks, to Monday, March 25th, council meeting. Looking for approval of the agenda? Second or?
Second.
All those in favor? Motion carried. And public participation time. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak to council?
Yeah.
Two weeks. Two meetings in a row. I don't know. I think he's feeling guilty. I asked for cake and he hasn't brought it yet. Anyways, anybody else? There we go. I don't really have anything going for Mayor's message. I did attend the Callwood Women's Institute on Saturday. That was good. I did do Earth, hey, Earth Hour, folks. What did you do?
Shut the lights up.
Did you do it? Good. Alright, so candlelight at my house for an hour or so. And that's about it. So we'll just move right on to item 4.1, adoption of the regular minute meetings of council March 11th. Second or? All those in favor? Motion carried. 4.2, receipt of minutes forward.
Move receipt of 4.2.1 through 4.2.5.
Second. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Need to note that Councilor Martin is not here tonight because he had work commitment out of town, so he is on his way to the airport. New business, 5.1, Finance and Admin Committee discussion on the five-year financial plan.
So, Madam Chair, this is specifically for item 5, and it's page 49 of 93.
And I just, again, I have this on page... Yeah, I'm just, I'm still showing up with this one here in here, so there's... Yeah, so we're going into item 5 on that which... In that memo, folks. As discussed, we are in a situation here where we have looked at reducing $26,935 from the supplementary request, which would cover off on two additional days on the graffiti specialist. So we now have to have conversation, folks, as to whether that is the intent of what we want happening. Members of council, further recommendation on this?
You were ready.
Councilor Daye.
Thank you. I would move that we fund half of that amount from taxation this year and look to fund the remainder from other municipalities who join in with the graffiti specialist position. And if that's not forthcoming, then we just stick with the half the amount that would allow us the four days.
And I think that what we have to do is just stick with what we can do. So, you know, the four days is a good one and a recommendation to bylaw for them to investigate and come forward with the information that would, might have a revisit at some point.
Second or on that? Councilor Luka? Lukas? You just never get it. Yeah, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
Madam Chair, yeah.
Part two?
Well, the decision has to be made tonight to direct staff to find the other half within the budget so that the tax lift stays the same, so that you can deal with the bylaws coming up later on in the meeting.
Yep.
Would it be fair to ask bylaw to try and find that in their budget? I don't know. Or some of it?
Finance?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Bylaw budget is not very big as it is, so to try to find $26,000 or even $13,000 would be almost impossible as it's above 95% wage and benefit. So essentially, staff here looking for direction to how to find this probably other than that. My advice would be to take it from contingency since that have no impact on anybody's budget or wages and benefit.
Councilor Daye?
I would recommend, I would move that we find the monies from contingency.
Second or? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Moving then to 5.2.1, Parks and Rec and amenity Lookout Lake Park.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The, we have received some correspondence from a resident in the area of Lookout Lake who had requested that a doggy bag dispenser be installed, and this was something that council and committee has looked at in the past. And there were concerns previously at the expense, possibly the litter that could occur if the bags were thrown around by vandals or whatever. So the recommendation from the committee is we have observed that in some parks, residents have taken it upon themselves to create a little bag dispenser and place it in the park where the residents who are local can place their excess plastic bags for the use of someone who may not have a bag and need a bag. And so as a gesture, I, the committee has recommended, and I would so move, that we write a letter to the resident informing her that the city may consider installing a suitable container if she alone or with a group of residents would be interested in keeping the container stocked with plastic bags.
Second or? Discussion? Question, Councilor Daye, do we have those doggy waste dispensers, like down on the lagoon and in some of the other areas?
We have none. And we had made a decision to not go to the expense of putting them in. We recognized that if we'd started, there would be a number of locations that would be wanting to have that type of bag dispenser. But we are also aware that where something is provided for free, people do tend to overavail themselves of it. And it's been looked at quite thoroughly in the past. So this was seen as maybe an option that would keep the cost very low. We would come up with an attractive dispenser that we could put, mount on a tellus pole somewhere near the park at the entrance or at an existing location. And if a resident was willing to stock it with bags, that would be a low-cost minimum capital expenditure for the city to undertake to support people in letting dog owners know that they need to clean up after their pets.
Thank you, through the chair. I just have a question with respect to how much the dispenser would cost. How much is this minimal capital cost and is it in our budget?
The, I'm quite sure it is. The one that we're modeling it after, I believe, is made out of a milk jug, so we're going to do a little better than that. Well, we're proposing to upgrade and call itized it a little bit, and I think that we can come up with something with the Public Works crew.
Every year, the detachment commander for West Shore RCMP comes to the committee asking for some suggestions in terms of what we like to see as the policing priorities for our community. And this year was no different. We did have them come in February and ask, we did defer it until March, so that we could work with our communications manager to get the word out and seek some additional public input. We didn't get a lot of additional public input, but what we did do is have a fair amount of conversation at the committee level. And at the end of the day, it was recommended that we reaffirm our policing priorities that we had for 2012 that were 1 through 4. Traffic enforcement with particular attention paid to the Esquimala Lagoon and school zones. Increase the visibility of the members. Community engagement, which you have noticed has happened with the open houses, both at Halloween and during the summer, and the continued focus on property crime. Also, during that discussion, our citizen representative, Dean Jensen, brought up the fact that another community, North Sanich, has recently withdrawn or given notice that they wish to withdraw from the regional crime unit, and how that would impact the whole region as a whole. They are very, they're a very busy unit, and the detachment commander, Inspector Kevin Violet, has indicated that they spend a lot of time, particularly on the West Shore. They've been an extremely effective unit, and to step back from the unit is really a step backwards. So it was, it was quite strongly felt that the city should write a letter to the unit reaffirming our, our issue of media release, rather, just to reaffirm Callwood's support for the regional crime unit, so the administration of the unit knows that certainly this community is solidly behind the regional crime unit and recognizes the value that it has on our community. So there are two motions, Worship. The first one, I will move that the policing priorities identified in the 2000, in the year 2012 be reaffirmed for the year 2003, 13. Thinking ahead.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried?
The second motion, Your Worship, is that the Callwood Communications Officer be directed to issue a media release to reconfirm the City of Callwood's support for the Greater Victoria Regional Crime Unit.
Thank you. Just want to give a quick word of support in that regard. I was very dismayed to see that North Sanich is pulling out their support from that. We certainly know that crime doesn't know where the borders are. Lots of our residents don't know where the borders are, but certainly the criminals And certainly when we were faced with horrific crime, the murder of Kimberly Proctor, for example, we know that those crimes are, you know, one in a million or whatever, whatever the numbers are. They don't know any boundaries. They happen where they happen. They happen every so many thousand people or whatever the stats are. And certainly, our community benefited from having the regional crime unit in place at that time. And I would hope that, you know, anyone who chooses not to be a member of the regional crime unit would keep that in mind, that you never know when it could happen to you. And those regional forces certainly help with the funding and the necessary resources to be in the community when you need them.
Olympic View Golf Course. I would ask Councilor Luka to take this one as I was not able to attend the meeting.
Thank you, Your Worship. The, at our last TPI meeting, the representative from the Olympic View Golf Course made a presentation outlining the fact that they actually want to add solar thermal hot water heating to their clubhouse, and they're inquiring as to whether they would qualify for solar Callwood grants and if any were available. Olympic View is actually in an interesting position in that they straddle a number of communities, but the way that their road is laid out, their address is actually in Callwood. So hence the reason why they came to the city seeking some approval to access some of the solar Callwood grants. We had actually some very good conversation at the committee, and we weighed a lot of the pros and cons and the benefits. We listened to what the applicant had to say and measured, measured their request to our goals and the goals and objectives of the solar Callwood program, and felt that this certainly would be a worthwhile endeavor and something that would be worthy of support, and in fact, may, may be able to expand in the fact that we're bringing on a large corporate partner that could be quite a role model should they decide to move forward with their solar thermal hot water. It would also, if they do happen to reduce their energy, it would also reduce Callwood's energy use and our greenhouse gas emission totals. It was also felt that should council support this initiative, that we would contact National Resources Canada just to make sure that they would qualify, and everything was on the up and up. The estimated grant total would be about $6,000 for Olympic View. There was a question asked if it would affect the residential component for those that wanted to access solar Callwood, and the answer to that was no. So in fact, they would be a welcome addition. At the end of the day, the committee moved, and I recommended, and I so moved, that the council support the Olympic View Golf Course being eligible for a solar Callwood grant as the building has a Callwood address subject to NRCAN approval.
Yes, I'm a little unclear as to how we calculated, but...
Maybe through Mr. Baxter?
update?
Your Worship, I'll run with this as well, since it was on the same committee agenda. This is not a new item to council. This has been before us in terms of getting a formalized license agreement for the BC Transit park-and-ride. The question that we had in the past was about the maintenance of the charging stations and how they would affect the, the current license agreement. At the end of the day, BC Transit was not currently prepared to take on the maintenance of the charging stations as they are unsure of what the cost might be. So we are structuring the license, the license agreement to not include them, and we will be receiving in about, I can't remember the exact total, but it was about $9,500, Michael, $9,800, I believe, yearly as part of their license fees, and that would include snow clearing and some other maintenance. At the end of the day, it was recommended by committee, and I so move that the mayor and chief administrative officer be authorized to sign the revised draft license agreement with BC Transit for the park-and-ride on Ocean Boulevard at Island Highway as presented to the council on March 25th, 2013.
Madam Chair, this business about conflict of interest is getting so complicated. I think the easiest way to handle it is, yeah, pass it down to the acting mayor.
I guess one of my first questions is, if not Transit taking care of the EV charging station, then who?
We will be maintaining all of the stations that we've put in, all six.
Okay, and then my second question is, at what cost?
There are no apparent costs right now. What we anticipate perhaps happening is vandalism. I haven't heard anybody reporting from anywhere that they've had their sites vandalized, but other than the vandalism, there's no apparent cost. The electricity, of course.
Okay, I guess I'm a little confused then. Why would BC Transit not want to sign this agreement because they don't know what the charges are going to be?
Because they don't know what they're going to be. It's pretty normal in a large bureaucracy, especially to, you know, be worried about anything you've never seen before.
Right, and I think, you know, we're a smaller bureaucracy, but we should be concerned about that as well.
Well, it's always balanced against the benefits.
Okay, so I'm a little uncomfortable with this, this motion as it's, or the recommendation as it's written, because it seems very unclear to the City of Callwood, who I hope would share the same concerns as BC Transit.
Thank you. It may well be that the issues are a little bit different for BC Transit than they are for the City of Callwood, because if they sign an agreement with us saying that they'll look after electric vehicle charging stations, then another municipality comes along and they have to do, sign the same type of agreement. So it could have a larger implication than for us. We know we have six vehicle charging stations in Callwood that we need to look after. They're brand new. They're probably not going to need anything for the first little while at least. So it could have a different implication for a larger organization.
I can maybe help a little bit with this one, because I was the one who raised this at the table when it came around, because if you look at the way the draft agreement was written under item 5, Transit agrees that it has a sole responsibility for loss or damage to any improvements to the licensed area. And I raised the fact that we had, we, Callwood, had put in the charging stations, and so I don't think Transit had anticipated that that was part of their improvements. So actually, I was slightly protecting BC Transit, because I think that was one reason to ask them to necessarily take that on when it had been our choice to put in the charging stations. So I asked staff to clarify with BC Transit, and that's what happened. So I think it does make sense, in the same way that we take on responsibility for the charging stations that are out front.
Thank you, Your Worship. I understand from Councilor Cullington that the agreement is for four years. At any point in time, will Transit assume the responsibility of those, or will they always remain with the City of Callwood, the charging station responsibilities?
I would suggest that that's something we will bring up with them every time we renegotiate it, and it will probably hinge on to what extent their bus riders are using the charging stations.
Because at some point, it makes sense to me that they would appreciate them being there and see them as part of their, a part of the solution to Transit in the Greater Victoria area. I guess the other question I have with respect to the four-year agreement, is it standard that it's always four years, or what is, what is the standard? I'm not sure, I'm not aware.
I haven't come across one of these agreements before. First one I've been involved in, and I imagine if there's any standard, it's come from BC Transit. That's probably what they do in other communities that have park-and-rides.
I mean, if I'm, if I'm correct, this is actually the first time we've actually had an agreement for this site, and it's, it's a good deal for us, because we're finally getting...
No, this is, this is almost an exact repeat of the earlier agreement we had for this site.
Okay.
But it lapsed, and nobody thought to renew it, so we're actually renewing it after a gap.
Okay. So it runs until midnight on October 31st, 2016, and says at that point in time, subject termination or renewal, so I assume at that point in time, we get to...
And what is the benefit to Callwood having this agreement with BC Transit? What does it mean? Is there money exchanged? What is, what...
$1,000.
Okay, and that's for the entire four years?
Per year.
Per year? And...
No, sorry. It's 9,800 per year, some, it's very close to that number. And they were paying it even in the gap where there was no agreement.
That was going to be my next question, if it was paid here. And then finally, who is responsible for monitoring parking and whatnot within the BC Transit park-and-ride area? Because of late, for days on end, I see this motorhome sitting there, and I don't know if that's Transit that's to monitor that, if it's, I don't know, bylaw, if it's RCMP. I'm not 100% clear on whose responsibility is it.
Thank you for that information. I'll report that to BC Transit, and we'll find out.
And I just have to bring up one small point I've been working on for a couple of years now, and it's at the park-and-ride, where the accessible curb cut for, to get from the sidewalk into the parking area for the park-and-ride needs to be painted out, so that there's an access into the parking lot. So I just raised that for, for the minutes that there is some inadequate painting that needs to be remedied.
The City of Callwood has no responsibility for that area, only for the piece the other side of the road.
Yes, one haven't gone anywhere.
I will, I will speak to Wade Davis, and, because I'm...
Do you think BC Transit is in charge? Because I've spoken to him.
Would you like us to just go and paint it?
Anyone who happens to have paint out, could they just go fix it?
That'll be the quickest way.
Because I've been trying for about two and a half to three years now.
Great, great. So what's the change then, that that will be the acting mayor and chief administrator of the council? That's for the chief of the...
Yeah, well, I just, I just have one other question.
I do. Any other questions?
Just one more. Through the chair. So if I have this right, the City of Callwood installs the EV charging stations, and the City of Callwood also pays for the electricity? Is that correct? And then so residents from not just Callwood, but the entire region, can come and charge their vehicles on the dime of the Callwood City taxpayer?
Yep, just so you can go do that if you're chosen, and it's minimal, and okay, okay.
Wow.
But we talked about previously, minimal, and...
I probably missed that meeting. Sorry. So the amounts would be minimal, like?
Very minimal, less than you would charge for parking.
Less than you would charge for the parking? Less than you would charge for the parking? Oh, I see. Okay, thank you.
That was easy.
Bylaw number 1499, looking for final on the City of Callwood highway naming by law. All in favor? Vote, motion carried. 6.3, by, bylaw number 1501, final reading, highway naming rocks in place. All in favor? Vote, motion carried. This one here, folks, slow us down a little bit. This is bylaw number 1505, meeting first, second, and third readings for the five-year financial plan 2013 to 2017. With introduction. Second. All in favor? Vote, motion carried. Blue second. Second, second. Discussion. Counselor Day? Just wondering if there was any amendment required with the change that we're considering?
Through the, through the chair to Counselor Day, no, we've, you've already made that decision, and you've directed staff through a motion of what to do. The tax lift stays exactly the same. Thank you.
Before we do that, can we say a huge thank you to staff for getting us through the budget?
Are there the developers doing the thing where the road is, I think? The road naming thing? I think. Unless, unless they're doing stand-ins, I don't know.